This is the regular meeting of the Mobile City Council, Tuesday, April the 5th. Please stand for invocation led by Pastor Michael Williams, Powerhouse Apostolic Ministries, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call, President Small.
Here.
Vice President Gregory.
Here.
Councilmember Penn.
Here.
Councilmember Carroll. Councilmember Reynolds.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Hey, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
It's good to see you, everyone. Oh.
Mr. Oh. I'm sorry, Councilmember Dave.
Here.
Yes, I was telling everybody good morning, so Councilman Dave. It's good to see everybody this morning at our August, excuse me, April the 5th meeting, our first meeting of April. And as I was saying in pre-council this morning, you know, April showers bring about May flowers and May weeds. So we are having some showers this morning, so that means some more grass and weeds going to grow. And again, many neighborhoods throughout the city experience, you know, overgrown properties and property that's been abandoned. Please dial 311 if you come across any type of property like that, please dial 311. If you can't dial 311 from your cell phone, please dial area code 251-208-5311 and report any type of overgrown properties that you may encounter in your neighborhood. Our rules are very simple. At this time, I ask if anyone has a cell phone or any other type of electronic device, put on the off or the vibrated position, the off or the vibrated position. Any person designed to address the council must sign in indicating the resolution, the ordinance appeal, or public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must state his or her name and address. Any person designed to speak to the council on a non-agenda item must contact the city clerk office no later than 2:00 PM on the Thursday prior to the council meeting. The subject that he or she wishes to address must be identified and pertain to the City of Mobile business. Any person who has not given a proper notice to the city clerk office and wishes to speak on a non-agenda item would not be allowed to address the council. Each person is allowed three minutes to address the council. A bell will sound to indicate the end of two minutes, one minute remains. For summarizing, the second bell indicates the time has expired. When addressing the council, there is to be no personal address to any individual council member. All statements are to be made to the chair who will recognize any council member who wishes to respond. To maintain decorum, there will be no undue applause and or public outcry allowed. Final clerk.
Approval of minutes from March the 29th.
Still move.
Second.
Impromptu move to second, any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Final clerk.
Communications from the mayor.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good to see everyone here this morning. Uh, we're gonna start off, uh, there are three items on my agenda this morning. First is, we're going to do the Firefighter of the Month. Uh, that'll be followed by me making remarks on four different issues. And then we'll close out with giving a proclamation on Sexual Awareness Month, Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And so, at this time, I would, uh, call in Chief Lemey to introduce the Firefighters of the Month. Months.
Good morning.
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 Well, it's always a great opportunity for us, and we certainly appreciate the time, and we were able to recognize a few of our own. Um, we have a lot of members that work hard each and every day, and I wish we could recognize all of them. But today, we've set aside the recognition for these two young men behind me. We got firefighter Carberry, he has only been on the job with Mobile for seven months, but he has been a firefighter for quite some time. He began his career, I believe, at Pritchard Fire, and, uh, served at a different municipality for coming to Mobile, but, uh, firefighter Carberry showed up to an accident on the way to work one day, and his peers noticed the work and effort that he put in well before he was even on the clock to serve the citizens of Mobile. Um, but I think they should know that we're always here and available, and he is a great testament to the fact that he stopped and rendered aid and helped those crews until that patient was transported to the hospital. It was a very bad accident, and he was the first one on scene. Um, he comes with a lot of experience and certifications, so that definitely shows his commitment to, to the profession and to the citizens of Mobile. Firefighter Glisten is a relatively new firefighter with us as well, um, three years on the job now, and he's third-generation firefighter. His dad's in attendance up there, Captain Barry Glisten, um, but his grandfather was also a district chief on this job, so he's from the fire service, he knows the fire service, and he's grown up around it. But he's started already setting the bar very high and trying to accomplish things. He's already become a swing driver, and he's currently enrolled in paramedic school so that he can eventually be a paramedic on one of our ambulances. But it's his commitment and that shows, you know, how passionate he is about the fire service and serving all of the citizens here and in the community. So I would just like to thank you for giving us the opportunity to stand before you and to thank them as Firefighter of the Month for February and March. Thank y'all.
Chief, as, chief as y'all exit, uh, you want to get his father, get a picture with him outside, and, um, Danbrook can take y'all's picture together, okay? Congratulations to you, his father and family. I'll begin my remarks by talking about the city's website. I don't know how many of you visit our website, but if you've been a frequent visitor over the last year, you'll notice continued, uh, continuous improvement in it. And one of the things I would like to point out now is that in this past week, we have added a search, uh, function to that, so you can, like a lot of websites, we now, you can type in the word or whatever to search the issue that you're, uh, looking for other than having to scroll through everything and, you know, hope to find it. And that is a major milestone to be able to have that. And I want to thank Jordan Gromen, who just works on this nonstop, it seems, to try to continue to improve our, uh, website. We want to make sure there's just easier for your access so that you know all the great things that are going on in the city of Mobile. Next item I'd like to talk about is our Environmental Education Program Guide. Um, it's part of our ongoing effort to address litter. We've partnered with area nonprofits regarding this. And we want to make it a comprehensive environmental education, uh, guide for every school in the, uh, city of Mobile. Casey Callaway, uh, Casey, uh, Chief Resilience Officer, uh, has been working on connect all these, uh, various groups together to make sure that we have a very robust program here. It's going to be offered by local nonprofits to students in every public, private, and proctor school across the city. And this is in our effort to stop littering. Everywhere that you go, most of you see the litter, and you know that, uh, you probably shake your head and wonder why is there litter on the streets? And I think we have to start at a young age educating our children. And this is something we just started. It's been going on for decades, but it's in an effort to make sure that we, uh, have a clean city. Uh, since the release of the program yesterday, we've had multiple teachers reach out about scheduling programs for their classrooms. The next item has to do with the Critical Repair Grant that the city's received. It's a neighborhood development, it's the Neighborhood Development Department's Critical Repair Program. We'll start accepting applications, or be accepting applications through Friday, April 29th. Uh, for those who are interested in applying for Critical Repair Grant, uh, you can do it in person at the Neighborhood Development Department Office on the fifth floor here in Government Plaza, or you can call 251-208-6294. That's 208-6294 for more information about the program. But it's, what it focuses on is replacing and repairing roofs for qualifying homeowners. It's a federally funded program that allows homeowners to meet certain requirements to apply for the grants through the city that will pay for critical repairs. My understanding is, is that, uh, it pays up to, up to $10,000 for the repair of roofs or the replacement of roofs, but it only pays, uh, for the actual repair. It's just not a $10,000 check that they write, but if the repair costs $7,900, that's how much you'll be able to get for it. But the goal is to keep homeowners in their homes so they do not deteriorate and contribute to the blight in our community. Obviously, there are certain eligibility and income requirements to qualify for this, but it's also intended to assist homes that in serious need of repair, uh, who are extremely low-income, elderly, or disabled. And this was a grant that the city received. It's, uh, $370,000 in CDBG funds and $330,000, um, in the ARPA funding. The last, my last remarks have to do with the Contractors College Applications. We'll be taking those applications through April 19th. The college classes start on April 26th and they end October 27th. Contractors College helps current and aspiring contractors develop the skills needed to navigate the bidding process, manage public contracts, and scale up their operations to make, to take on larger projects. So at this time, uh, I would like to read the proclamation having to do with Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and I would ask Laurie Roland, Katrina Kennedy, Danielle Lammon, Casey Dells, Kelsey Bryant, Ashley Rocken, Chanel Chapman, if they're here, to please come down to the podium, okay? And after I read the proclamation, I would ask that, uh, and we'll have a picture taken, and then we will ask one of you or two of you to make remarks to the city council, okay? The proclamation reads, "Whereas the Rape Crisis Center has provided comfort and support to sexual assault victims in the community for 44 years, facilitating awareness and education while offering high-quality assistance to those in need; and whereas the Rape Crisis Center provides 24-hour support to sexual assault victims and their families through direct services, prevention, education, and professional training to all citizens of the city of Mobile; and whereas the Rape Crisis Center service, service a cross-section of the people of various races, socially-economic, and educational levels. In 2021, the center provided 277 crisis phone calls, 171 hospital calls, office visits, follow-up, uh, victim support calls, court advocacy, family-friend support, clothing bank, dolls, bears given to child victims, transportation, informational referrals to community agencies. Now therefore, I, William S. Stimson, the 108th Mayor of the city of Mobile, do hereby recognize the Rape Crisis Center and proclaim the month of April 20, uh, 22 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month." Thank you, ladies, for what you do, and congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor Stimson, and to all of the city council and the, um, council members. On behalf of Lifeline's Counseling Services, the Division of Rape Crisis Center, we do appreciate the time that you all have taken out to service us with this proclamation.
Good morning. Good morning. Um, it's quite often in life that we have groups that provide services to our communities that are here to do things like unite us, strengthen us, and impact our communities. So, um, today I was, uh, asked and told that our group from Ameri- AmeriCor.
I'm good.
Okay. Yeah, that AmeriCor was, uh, here in our city, and our group was leading. So AmeriCor is a group that brings people together to handle some of the community's toughest problems, to help us clean up our riverways and waterways, to help us, uh, teach in schools and areas that are hard to reach and be taught in. Uh, they provide resources with people in volunteer efforts where they actually volunteer their time. Uh, AmeriCor is one of the only institutions in the, in the United States that actually has groups of individuals that actually volunteer their time. So, and what they do is they, with their time, they enrich our community and give us some of the things that we seldom have or find. So today, with the advent, and knowing that they have been here for two years volunteering their time and giving a such to our community, I have asked them to come in so that they could be recognized. And we have seven individuals here that I'd like just to call down and say thank you for, uh, enriching our community, especially through Baykeeper, because Baykeeper does such a great job in keeping our waterway safe. So if you would, please come down. Uh, Richard Whiting. Taylor Weldon. Blakely Taylor. Elena McFadden. Lucy Johnson. Nate Carr. And Dakota Bilbury. Seven individuals that have given two years of their time and their effort to the city of Mobile to helping us maintain our waterway and keeping it clean, but most of all, remember, volunteered their time to help us, to unite us, and to strengthen us. So please, thank you, all of you.
I apologize for that, Mr. Mayor.
No, I'm good. That was it. Yep, perfect.
All right. Final clerk.
Uh, Mr. President, um, if it's okay, we'll call, uh, William Bryant now to give the, um, uh, report of the state of scouting.
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
I'm William Bryant, the Scout Executive CEO of the Mobile Area Council, and thanks for allowing us to give the state of, state of scouting. Scouting was started here in 1920, actually, April 8th, 1920, by members of the Chamber of Commerce and the former mayor of, of the city of Mobile, Mayor Crawford. With that, scouting has been around here over 101 years. And I tell you, uh, the last two years has been very trying in reference to COVID. Uh, typically, we recruit between 700 and 900 kids in the fall. In 2020, we recruited 43. Think about that, only 43 families was allowed to be in scouting in 2020. Last year, we was able to come back up to 500 young people to be in scouting, but not where we, we was. But we, we're definitely thankful that come fall of 2022, in all four counties that we've served, we were able to get back into all the schools. So we're looking forward to a great, great fall recruitment, and I'm happy to serve as the Scout Executive of this great council. And before I sit down, I would like to introduce our three newest Eagle Scouts in the Mobile Area Council. Eagle Scout Tomas, Eagle Scout Armstrong, and Eagle Scout Phillips. So Eagle Scout Tomas.
My ga- my name is Gabriel Tomas. I'm in Troop 20 Eagle Scout. Um, I go to WUP Davidson High School.
Speak a little bit louder for me.
I go to Davidson High School. I'm a sophomore there. And for my Eagle Scout, I painted the fences at Our Lady of Lord's Catholic Church.
Congratulations.
Good morning. Hello, everyone. I am Johnny Phillips. I want to thank y'all first for letting me come here and speak for y'all. I am 15 years of age. I am Eagle Scout from Troop 2 and Lodge Chief of the Order of the Era for West Carolina Lodge. My Eagle Scout project consisted of working with the city of Mobile to refurbish a trail that consists of 35 miles in length, 35 markers and five miles in length, and I worked with Mr. Jacob Lawrence on that to get the markers painted and go to different cities, or go to different buildings and monuments to get the history of them and put it on a brochure that I am putting around places in downtown Mobile. I am a sophomore at Baker High School. Thank you for your time.
Congratulations.
Thanks, y'all.
Good morning. My name is Chayla Armstrong, and I'm a, and I'm a member of, uh, Boy Scout Troop 283 out of Liberty Missionary Baptist Church. Um, and recently, I was awarded the Eagle Scout Award. Not only was I awarded this award, but, um, I also have the honor of being the first African-American female Eagle Scout in the state of Alabama.
I'm a senior at Murphy High School, and I plan, uh, on attending the University of Alabama in the fall. And for my Eagle Scout project, uh, I did care packages for Wilma Hall.
Congratulations.
Yeah, what, what a great group of young leaders. And when you look at these, you can truly say that the future of this city is bright, is it not? You know, over 100 hours of dedication, planning, preparation, and achievements goes into just the Eagle Scout award and, and process. That doesn't include the hours just to get to the point of eligibility. And when you look at past presidents, corporate CEOs, leaders, et cetera, so many of those have that Eagle Scout tag next to their name. So what a great accomplishment, but more importantly, what a bright future you present to this city and to the state. What great accolades to our city that, that you've brought. I've got a certificate for each of you this morning for this accomplishment, and it's my honor to present you with this. Ms. Armstrong? Congratulations. Looking at the picture after this. Mr. Tomas? And Mr. Phillips? Job well done.
Again, congratulations.
I forgot to mention, there are parents of these in Scoutmaster. Y'all want to rise so we can recognize y'all, they wouldn't be here without you. Great job.
Adoption of the agenda. Still move.
Second.
Impromptu move to second, any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Agenda is adopted.
Appeals. We have requests for waiver of noise ordinance on April the 30th in Tricentennial Park, June the 4th in Herndon Sage Park, April 15th in, uh, Spanish Plaza, Beenville Square, and Cathedral Square, May 5th in Cooper Riverside Park, May 14th on Black Lawn Street, May 10th in Arlington Park, May 22nd in Medal of Honor Park, and April 17th in Langen Park. Still move.
Second.
Impromptu move to second, any discussions?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Chair.
Um, Vice President.
On the Langen Park noise waiver, that is Sunday, and since they are going from 7:00 AM until 8:00 PM, uh, in speaking with the Director of Parks and Recreation, I would like to just change the ending time to 6:00 PM.
Any other discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Appeals pass.
Public hearings. Today is a public hearing to rezone property located at the northeast corner of Halls Mill Road and River Du Shane Road from B3 to I1.
Is anyone present in the audience that'd like to speak on behalf on this public hearing? You may do so by, uh, now, by coming down to the podium, giving us your name and your address. As for the record, that we are going to lay this over until May, and, um, and we're also going to be rerunning this, um, as a new advertisement, because we're going to make some changes in the, uh, particular, um, on this particular item. Is anyone else present? If not, this public hearing is closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. Um, we have it listed as Bobby Blanks, but it should be Carolyn Blanks.
Ms. Blanks.
Following, uh, Ms. Blanks is Byron Daniel.
Can I get your address, Ms. Blanks? Thank you.
We've been begging so long for justice and equality. All our white brothers up in Sisters, you should be tired of us begging for it. Those seats that you sit in, those are not legislative seats. Those are seats of judgment. You make decisions on people's lives, where they live, and what they do. That's why our communities look and do what it does, because I don't feel that you have made the correct decision on districting and different things that have happened to our community. We, Dr. King been dead almost 50, oh, over 50 years, and we still talking about justice. That means that somebody on these seats have not been making the correct decision, because it wouldn't look and be like it is. We know that what the mayor has presented is that 51% is not correct. We do not want you sitting on your sides, waiting the six months out, not having a meeting, and at the last minute have a meeting, and then we come up with the 51%. Because we will be going to the court system, because we are not going to accept it. So if you have us to take our money from what we need to do with something else to go to court, we plan on taking your money coming election, because we are not going to stand by and allow these kind of things, these bad decisions that you're making up here, to stand up. We can't allow it. It's been going on too long. It's been going on too long, and we are tired of it. It's been going on too long, and we are tired of it. Y'all white folks should be tired of coming down here begging. Y'all got the power in your hands. Vote, vote with these brothers and sisters. Vote together. You know we need, you know we need at least fifty-four percent in districting. You know it. If we make districting, we need fifty-four percent black people. You know that. So why you gonna sit there and not have meetings? All our black brothers and sisters have gotten together, get with Mayor Thompson, people that he's got together, and everybody sit down and come up with the right percentage. We've got to come up with it. We got to do right for once in our life. Don't vote as no Republican, no Democrat. Vote like you need to vote in your heart because you got to give an account for those decisions that you're making. Like the one that you made about R V and Burris Barkin Tower, that's not a correct decision. We haven't had no shift in our population. Those are the thousand three and four thousand people, the people you took from Orange Grove, Happy Hill, and Roger Williams. That's what I wanted to say about.
All right, thank you so much, Ms. Blanks. And just for the knowledge for the general public, this council don't have anything to do with the Housing Board, R V, nor Barkin Towers. Madam Clerk.
Byron Daniel, following Byron Daniel Jahad Erby.
Good morning to all. My name is Byron Daniel. Sixty-nine forty-one Moffett Road, Mobile, Alabama, three-six-six-one-eight. Byron Daniel, sixty-nine forty-one Moffett Road, Mobile, Alabama, three-six-six-one-eight. Pastor, Senior Pastor at the Mount Zion Primitive Baptist Church, and a member of the I M A. I want to share about redistricting. I know you have a decision to make soon, and the decision regarding final providing our community the opportunity to have proper representation in the city government. As you may know, that fifty-four years ago, yesterday, that is, that the Reverend Martin Luther King was assassinated about four hundred miles away in the city of Memphis, Tennessee. He was assassinated by a racist man who had hated him for what he stood for, what he preached, and what he fought for. He fought for equality, representation, and the end to systematic poverty. Unfortunately, we still see some of those areas around even in the city of Mobile, the state of Alabama, and so forth. As I stand before you here today, it is hard to not think about Martin Luther King and what he stood for as a leader to break down the barriers to provide us the right to be represented. We all know that representation matter. It matters in the public service. It matters when laws are passed. It matters when our city hard-earned tax money are spent in and much, much more. We want representation. We believe that reputation should represent the city in which we're serving. But so far, it seems like there's been crickets on our ears. So we come down here week after week, and we're sharing and encouraging, appealing, urging, asking that we find an avenue to where we can come together regarding this here redistricting. We are the constituents. We represent more than just the constituents. We represent this city and the people that we serve. Nearly a month ago, we delivered two maps for the consideration very close to the map previously presented by our mayor. But this time is getting much closer to the threshold number needed to actually meet the legal and moral obligation you have. But other than your commandments, your comments have been quieted. We thank Councilman Carroll for what he has done in speaking, but we haven't heard the word of transparency in which we've heard most of the time here at this particular city council. Please look at the map and allow your constituents to take a look of it as well because the more we allow the eyes of your people that you're serving to see it, the right decision can be made. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jahad Erby. I reside at six-twenty-two Wellington Street. Can I pass? I'm here today to talk about the Mobile Youth ESPY Awards. It's an event I created in twenty twenty-one to give back to the youth here in Mobile. Twenty twenty-one, we did a virtual due to the pandemic. This will be the actual first year we do in-person award show. The Mobile Youth ESPY Awards is a significant opportunity to advance the youth empowerment and development on a bigger scale here in Mobile. The intention of the Mobile Youth ESPY Awards is to identify, promote, and reward the young people pursuing excellence, contributing to a positive resource here in Mobile through sports. Today's young people have the power to transform the country, the state, and the city. We strive to empower and support through their performances. I'm here simply to extend the invite to the council, the mayor. The award show will be a big ordeal here in Mobile. I'm giving out two hundred and fifty awards to the youth. This year, we started with football since it's one of our biggest sports here. I am a former collegiate athlete who graduated, came back to Mobile. I'm a former Mobile police officer, now a stay-at-home dad due to my daughter having autism. So this is something I'm looking to grow here for the youth here in Mobile. It will be a big stage. Hopefully, we can gravitate to all sports moving forward. This has been funded out of my pocket. The award show is about twelve to fifteen thousand dollars. I'm about eight thousand dollars towards the way, so I am working hard to get there through local sponsors and myself. So I wanted to extend the invite to you all if you all would like to come, celebrate the youth, and help this thing grow. Thank you all.
Give us the date and time again.
It's going to be June fifth is the actual award show, but it is a weekend. So June third, we have a college tour. We're taking them to view the campus of South Alabama, to see the stadium and the football facilities. That Friday, we have a party for the youth, for all two hundred candidates. We're going to feed them, let them play games. Saturday will be the ESPY Challenge Games where we are uniforming them with uniforms. I have the NFL Combine staff, which I travel with. They will be coming down, setting up the official combine so the kids can go through that on Saturday. And Sunday, we had a big celebration at Friendship Baptist Church on Cody Road.
Mr. Erby, do you have all this like on a flyer?
Yes, sir.
If you could.
I couldn't afford nine copies, so.
Yeah, if you can send it to our clerk office through a PDF.
Yes, sir.
We can share it on electronic news alerts and everything.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much. Thank y'all for y'all time.
Thanks for coming down.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr.
Mr. Erby, I want to thank you so much for everything that you're doing with young people. Youth is definitely my heart, and I actually already have started voted, voting for some of the kids for the ESPY Awards. So thank you again for coming down, and whatever way I can support, I'll be there.
Mr. President.
Mr. Dave.
I'd just like to, I'd like to ask the gentleman before he leaves. I'm probably out of it, but could you tell me what ESPY stands for? Excellence in Sports Year Round. Okay, thank you.
C I P resolutions held over. Thirteen-two-eight-five, authorized change order number three with John G. Watson Construction Company for Baltimore Street and Drainage Rehabilitation.
So moved.
Second.
Improperly moved to second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Resolutions held over. Zero-eight-two-eight-six, approved purchase order to E Builder for annual renewal of project management software. Zero-eight-two-eight-seven and two-eight-eight are approving purchase orders to Samsung Equipment for Peterbilt garbage trucks. Zero-eight-two-eight-nine, approved purchase order to Kane's Tree and Landscape for tree removal. Zero-eight-two-ninety, approved purchase orders for fuel for wave transit. Eighteen-two-ninety-one, determine necessity for condemnation of certain lands, track eighteen for widening of McGregor Avenue. Twenty-one-two-nine-two, authorized contract with Hexagon on-call records for software products and services for M P D Records Management System. Thirty-seven-two-nine-three, consider approval of a certificate of public convenience and necessity to Edwards Automotive doing business as premier transit to operate a sedan service.
So moved.
Second.
Improperly moved to second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Resolution passes.
Ordinance is being introduced. Sixty-four-zero-one-eight.
I move to waive the rules for immediate consideration.
Second.
Improperly moved to second. Any discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. This is being brought up for immediate consideration.
Have to read it?
This is just.
She just needs to read it.
Okay, sure.
Sixty-four-zero-one-eight.
Hold on, we still didn't vote to waive the rules. So he was really talking during discussions, so he could have.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But we just go ahead and waive the rules. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Not a certain.
Sixty-four-zero-one-eight, rezone property located at the northeast corner of Pauls Mill Road and River Duchesne Road from B three to I one.
So moved.
Second.
Improperly moved to second. Any discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Mr. Reynolds.
This is just being brought up so that we could amend this ordinance, and then the intent is to hold this over once amended to May third. So with that, I would like to offer the amendment that is on record with the clerk's office requiring an eight-foot wooden privacy fence.
Improperly moved to second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I move to, move to hold over ordinance sixty-four-zero-one-eight until May third.
Second.
Properly moved to second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Consent resolutions being introduced, zero-three-two-nine-seven through sixty-three-hundred.
Move to waive the rules in order to consider these resolutions.
Second.
Properly moved to second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Not a certain.
Zero-three-two-nine-seven, reappoint Richard Davis to the History Museum of Mobile Board. Fifty-eight-two-nine-eight and two-nine-nine are authorizing removal of weeds and assessing cost for removal of weeds, weed lean groups sixteen-twenty-six and sixteen-twenty-three. Sixty-three-hundred, approve award, a special bonus to the firefighters of the month.
So moved.
Second.
Improperly moved to second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Resolution passes.
Resolutions being introduced, zero-one-three-zero-one through sixty-three-zero-five.
Per council rules, these resolutions will be laid over for one week.
Call for public hearings. Forty-one-three-zero-six, call for public hearing to rezone property located at ninety-three, ninety-five, and ninety-seven North Sage Avenue from R one to B two, scheduled May third. Forty-one-three-zero-seven, call for public hearing to rezone property located at the northeast corner of Pauls Mill Road and River Duchesne Road from B three to I one, scheduled May third.
So moved.
Second.
Improperly moved to second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearings.
Announcing.
Start with District Five, Councilman Dave.
Thank you, Mr. President. There will be a meeting of the city council's finance committee this afternoon at one o'clock p.m. in the city council conference room on the ninth floor of the South Tower. The finance director, Mr. Holt, will be with us. We have a number of items to discuss with him, including preliminary look at the process for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget, overview of the city's long-term debt, a look at the portions of that debt and perhaps other debt that's related to the Gulf West Maritime Museum, and a few other items. So that'll be today at one o'clock p.m. in our ninth floor conference room. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dave. Councilman William Carroll, District Two.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a series of community meetings coming up, starting the last week in April through May, scheduled, I think there are three. Please get all information from my newsletter, and we will announce all dates next week. So please get dates from the newsletter, and we'll announce all dates next week. Also, we'll continue to talk about redistricting in the community meetings. Also, we will discuss opportunities for possible future redevelopment in our city. So please stand by, and I look forward to seeing everyone out and about in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. District Six, Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a couple of meetings coming up this next week. Tuesday evening, six-thirty, at the Sads Healthcare Conference Room on University. I'll be meeting with any neighborhood leaders to discuss the F Y twenty-three Capital Improvement Program for our district. Again, that's April the twelfth. If you're a HOA member, leader, or a neighborhood, community leader, and also the city neighborhood outreach folks in ETR, you guys are more than welcome to attend that. I'll get you the details. The fourteenth on Thursday, we'll have our District Six quarterly meeting at the Connie Hudson Center at six-thirty p.m. We'll be discussing the three-one-one process and work orders. We'll be looking at redistricting, the capital improvement program priorities for the next year, and we'll be talking about annexation. That's all. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, District Four. Councilman Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. President. The capital improvement committee has been rescheduled from April fifth to April twelfth at one p.m., and the committee will receive information from our ever-more-busy Director Holt regarding past expenditures related to the capital improvement ordinance. There will also be discussions surrounding the future of the ordinance, if it needs to increase and that sort of thing. So look forward to seeing everyone there. Committee members are Mr. Jones and Mr. Small. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds, District One. Councilman Pan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, we will have another community meeting. Probably about a month ago, I sent out a letter with all our dates for our meetings this year, and so we will have a community meeting today at the Michael Figures Community Center. Hopefully, we declaring favorable weather conditions today so we can have tonight, so we can have that meeting, but it will be at six p.m. So we're inviting everyone to come out tonight at six p.m. Also, on April the twenty-third, we'll be hosting a three-on-three basketball tournament at the Michael Figures Community Center at the park area at the basketball court. Registration started now. Please register by April the eleventh so we can make sure we have jerseys for all the kids. It's free for sixth grade through twelfth grade, and so we're inviting the City Mobile to come out and fellowship. This is an opportunity to support our young people and give them a positive supporting environment. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Pan. District Seven, Vice President Gregory.
Thank you, Mr. President. On Sunday over the weekend, there was a celebration at the fire station, Fire Station Number Eighteen in Spring Hill for the new patio project that was there. We had a great turnout, lots of kids' activities. Parents and kids were out in full force, a lot of games and events for the kids to do. We had a SWAT vehicle there that attracted a lot of attention, not just the kids, but their parents too, and fire trucks. It was just a great display of city resources there for the fire department as well as police department, and the parks department was also there, putting out information. police department, and the parks department was also there, putting out information and doing face painting and just, you know, a lot of fun for all of the kids. But one of the, I think, the most popular activities was when the little kids were able to use the fire hose and turn on the water to actually put out what is a recreated sort of a little electrical house with a fire. But it was just so much fun to watch those little kids holding the hose and spraying those houses. So, you know, a really great day for the City Mobile. This patio project was a partnership between the Village of Spring Hill and the City of Mobile, and it was paid for by the Village of Spring Hill that raised funds throughout the community to do this project. Tonight, if the weather holds up, there will be an official dedication. Coming up on Thursday, the Mobile Botanical Gardens is holding their One Enchanted Evening. This is the first time in several years they've been able to do this. It is a big fundraiser for the gardens to keep them operating the way they would like to, to keep the gardens up. It's a lovely place. If you have not been out there, please make plans to go out to the Mobile Botanical Gardens and see what they have. Coming up April 13th, we have an opportunity in the Mobile Terrace Community at First Street. It's the New Jerusalem Church at 7220 First Street for people to come and pick up applications in person for the ARPA funds, for the home revitalization projects that are started in April. So if you just need a little bit of help, you would like to fill out your application in person to get answers to your questions, this will be an opportunity to do that. Of course, you can also get applications online and other places, but I felt like for some people, it was better to bring the services to them so that they could fill out the applications on site. And thank you to Jamie Roberts and all of his department, and to Keisha Brown for all the help that you were providing us to do this program in Mobile Terrace.
Thank you, Vice President Gregory, and greetings to the citizens of District 3. Please mark your calendars for two big events we have coming up. On Saturday, April the 16th, we will be having our eighth annual Easter egg hunt, which will be held at Taylor Park on 1050 Baltimore Street, inviting all the kids, you know, from zero to 12 years old to come out on April the 16th from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. Again, this is our eighth annual event. Please come out for plenty of food, fun, fellowship, and of course, Easter eggs. And on Tuesday, April the 26th, we will have our District Spring Meeting. This meeting will be held at the Mobile Downtown Airport, 2455 Michigan Avenue. Mr. Chris Curry, the president of the Mobile Airport Authority, will be hosting us. Many citizens in District 3 have questions about the airport, so we will be having our community meeting, our district meeting at the airport. We also will be inviting the other city departments to come out. If anything in particular that you'd like to address to the citizens of District 3, please contact me at CJ dot small at CityofMobile dot org, or either call 251-208-7441 to citizens of District 3 have any questions about any other departments, questions that you might have, you know, that you would like to bring, brought up at the meeting. Again, this meeting will be held on Tuesday, April 26th at 6:00 p.m. at the Mobile Downtown Airport. Is there anything else on this council? Anything from the administration? Ms. Smith?
Yes, good morning. I would like to announce that on this weekend, Saturday and Sunday, we will be having the kite festival again. If you missed it last year, you do not want to miss it this year. We had over 7,000 participants come. We are expecting beautiful windy weather. Kites will be sold at the site. There will be food and drinks. There will also be a concert that happens at the same time. This is at Battleship Park, Saturday from 10:00 to 7:00, and then on Sunday from noon to 5:00. It also kicks off at the Art Walk on Friday. They'll be giving out kites there as well. So look forward to seeing you all there.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Anything else from the administration?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Improper to move to second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All oppose? This means the.